Alright, it is, what time is it?
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five, or seven four, seven oh five. It is September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. I'm going to call the Frontier Regional School Committee to order. This meeting is recorded. The first thing on the agenda is reorganization. So could I get a nomination for chair? Do you have a first and a second? Let me see who's chair. Any other nominations? Seeing none? Closing nominations? All of them?
Go ahead.
You say you're willing to do it?
Yes.
All those in favor of...
I have a problem saying it.
We see being chair again? All those in favor? And Bill at home? Yep, hands up here. Thank you, sir. I hand the meeting to you.
Alright, uh, next I'll entertain motions for nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Olivia.
Second.
Thank you. Got a cheat sheet. Alright, any other nominations? Oh, in favor of Olivia for vice chair? That's why I should have just gone with election. Alright, thank you Olivia for serving as vice chair again this year. Should ask you if you're willing, Chris. Alright. Entertain nominations for secretary?
Nominate Miss White.
Anyone else wanna vie for the enticing role of secretary? All in favor of Chris continuing to be secretary? Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Alright, so we've got next the budget subcommittee. And I'll just kind of remind folks who were on it. Last year, if you don't already know, um, Bill for Whately, Mary for Deerfield, Keith for Sunderland, and Phil for Conway. And nominations, I don't know if you guys wanna do this town by town or as a one fell swoop?
I think you appoint.
Oh, this is appointed.
You appoint everything.
Yes.
The rest of it.
Is everybody good with continuing to serve on there? Is anybody interested in being a part of that group that isn't a part of that group?
You gotta ask the old timer if he still wants to do it.
Oh yeah, that's true. Bill, do you wanna continue to be on the budget subcommittee? Or you wanna see if somebody else from Whately wants to hop in?
I think he wants to.
That was a yes.
Okay, alright. You guys are closer to the L. Make sure I'm not misinterpreting it. We can't hear you guys very well.
That was a yes, though.
So. Alright, so we've got the same members as last year with Bill, Mary, Keith, and Phil representing their respective communities. If I'm right from recalling our meeting, it's the negotiation year.
Yep.
So we've got a negotiation team from last year of Phil, Joe, who would need to be someone different from Sunderland, and Bob and Olivia. For the folks who were on it last year who are still here, are you guys willing to continue?
Yep.
Okay. And from Sunderland? Paper, scissors, or? So we've got Phil from Conway, Chris from Sunderland, Bob from Whately, and Olivia from Deerfield. Thank you, guys. Capital Improvement Committee, Bob, Keith, Jared, and Damian. You guys all happy to continue with your role in that? Anybody else interested in being a part of that crew?
I'm good.
Keep things steady. We need a new representative for the collaborative?
Oh, I second that, too. There you go, you got Damian.
Thank you. Alright, who does Keith do in the collaborative? I'll continue with the Mars. For the Policy Review Committee, we had Bob, Phil, Olivia, and Chris. You guys happy to continue in those roles? Yeah. And I would just kind of offer out there that even though these folks are in the appointed seats on this, you're welcome to join any of these committees as it expands your knowledge about what we do. And Bob, you wanna keep on the sick leave thing?
Yeah.
Okay. We're actually, huh, left. Alright.
Who was second on the sick leave?
Me, sorry. Yeah. Should have been clear. I think that takes care of reorganization. I will do a quick, this is only, will only probably take a minute, but this came up in a meeting last year, on new business. I'm just, I think it's a good way to start each meeting to do kind of a review of our goals. And so I just pulled our organizational goals from, um, from our policy and just to kind of remind everybody as we start this year that the school committee's primary responsibility is to establish those purposes, programs, and procedures that will best produce the educational achievement needed by our students. The committee is charged with accomplishing this while also being responsible for wise management of resources available to the school district. The committee must fulfill these responsibilities by functioning primarily as a legislative body to formulate and adopt policy by selecting an executive officer to implement policy and by evaluating the results. It must carry out its functions openly while seeking the comments of the public, students, and staff in its decision-making processes. Just think that helps to kind of focus us on what our role is here as we move forward in here. Our first order of business is to review and approve the minutes from June eleventh and August thirteenth.
So moved.
And, oh, in favor of approving the minutes? Motion passes. Move on to Shelley with the financial statements and warrants.
Can you hear me, homie?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I got like crazy pissed.
Okay, great. Uh, so I'm gonna give you the warrant totals for July and August. There were seventy-six warrants issued, paying bills totaling seven million nine hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Bob, did you get into signing those? I think you were in today.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to swing by and just let me know. We can go over whatever we need to. A couple of things before we get into the financial reports. Sorry, I'm home because I do not feel well and don't want to expose anyone. And that means the dogs are here, so. Couple of things before we go over the financial report. So one, the audit is in progress. We, I think, are gonna have some findings on our report about school committee votes. There was some questions, particularly clarity of funding for capital projects, so I won't be surprised if that comes up as something that we need to approve for this year. Going back and looking over everything, I do see how there could be some confusion. So we'll work on that. And then the other figures, our E and D estimate right now is looking to be slightly over the five percent, much like we had last year for twenty-five with our certification, where we had to return funds, sorry, I'm trying to not plug in my computer. We had to return funds to the town through the budget process. So we'll do that again. We are overall, let you guys know, you know, as we continue through, we are really early that they're getting the certification done. So I'm pleased about that. Our office has been able to move quickly through the audit process, so I'll keep you updated. Um, the other thing I wanted to give you an update on quickly is the athletic trainer. So we did sign that agreement with Mass General to try to hire an athletic trainer through them. We've not been able to secure for that position. They claimed that there were zero applicants and all of the postings that they put out. The new athletic director has had communication with them. But again, well, no inviting. It seems to be an area issue. You know, many of us have reached out to different people that we know in the industry and, you know, there's other school districts looking as well. So it just seems to be something lacking in the master mass. We are back to our same process for hiring a trainer primarily for the required events, but we're not having many of those offices on site that we had intended to. So I suppose at least some room for discussion moving forward as to how we wanna approach this. And we can add as an agenda item down the road, but it might be something that we wanna consider that we actually add as a staffing position just so that may create greater interest. It could be a turnoff for people to be a contractor with the hospital and only being guaranteed for a one-year position. So we can contribute that in the future. Any questions about that before I go on to the financial statements? Either the audit or the trainer? Okay. Um, so the financial statements, I wanted to go over a couple of account overages that I think are important for you to be aware of at this point. If you have other questions that I didn't want to talk on, just let me know. I'm gonna move kind of quickly so we can bring it back around if, you know, that's what they've been pointing out. There are some natural overages in the budget. For example, the superintendent's line and his secretary line, that's a result sometimes of Excel rounded formulas and percentages. So the cost share for the super's position was supposed to be point six three and ended up hitting the budget at point six zero. That's where that little difference is coming from there. There's not actually an overage in his salary. It's just a little bit lined up, but we have an accounting system and Excel didn't match up exactly. Um, so other natural overages that happened, we have a new copier lease, so our fees there are higher. We're paying a different pricing structure for our printing, so we'll be comparing the old system to the new we go through this year, trying to make sure we are properly managing the future. Lead fees under athletics are always something that are sort of up in the air. M I A A change that already is not based on particular reason. So that one should be randomly year to year as well. And then another example is summer custodial, custodians. So we bring in active staff over the summer to help get all the complete, know the board. And we ran, I know, about three thousand this year. So those are some examples of sort of unknown things that I wasn't expecting to come up. Some other things to point out are the receptionist under the superintendent's office. There's about a ten thousand dollar savings there. That's because we've been able to secure a grant to pick up part of that position. So that's some savings that will help us set some of those other overages. Accounting software and professional fees are both also over. Part of our audit, there's two components of the audit. There's one that actually looks at the government funding standards. That's only done every other year, so we don't inflate the budget to cover that. When it comes up, we just let that line go over. And accounting software, we're currently looking at each of the platforms that we have with our software to see if we can drop anything that we're not currently using. It is a costly product. It is over budget at all five schools. So we're just trying to look at ways that we can bring that cost down. Principal and assistant principal contracts were negotiated after the budget was approved, so those line items are gonna maintain at overage throughout the year. Uh, and then the other big one that I wanted to point out, if you look under teacher salaries at the world language line, it shows an overage right now of, I think, about forty-six thousand. That'll come down because we have a retiree in that department who did start this fall. I think the retire date is somewhere in October. So you have to load the system with the full salary, then adds for pay and overrated properly. So you'll see that number drop. So that's not truly an overage in the budget. Couple of things that we're watching are obviously always the health insurance line. Rates did increase this year. I think we're gonna be fine based on initial projections. And after a moment has opened, a moment finished up, we know who now is on the plan. So I'm just keeping a close eye on that. And then we're always keeping a close eye on maintenance, custodial, or building related. I know that was a lot of information, so let me know if I missed something that you caught in the report or if you have any questions about any of that. Otherwise, I'm assuming I don't have anything further.
Thank you, Shelley. I see we have one member public here. Thank you. And we've got a student over there that I cannot see your name.
Anna.
Anna, thank you. Do you have a student council report?
Yeah. Can you hear me all right?
We can, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anna Faskins, I'm a junior. I'm the vice president of student council alongside the delegate slash representative. First things first, the new cell phone policy. There's a lot of pushback at first with students, but I see a lot more engagement in class now. Secondly, student council now expanded to incorporate, um, class officers into student council, which is great because there's a lot more representation amongst grades in student council. Going on right now actually is the pack, the house for Aurora. And all proceeds will be donated to Aurora and her family. And if you can't contribute, uh, we highly suggest the GoFundMe connected to it. And lastly, Spirit Week, um, organizers messaging council is coming up October seventh through eleventh, and our themes will be announced shortly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, you got the principals' report?
Yeah, so I wanna start off just by echoing what Anna's saying just to let everybody know that they are having basically a packed house for Aurora familia. So she's one of, she's one of our students. She's facing very dire medical conditions. So if you're able to stop by after the meeting, it would be wonderful. So I just wanna put that out there as well. Um, I do wanna let you know about our new staff that we did hire and teachers that we hired this year. We hired Michelle De Sorger to work as a special education teacher in our middle school. Nicole Dupree is our new school psychologist. I thought we could get away without reviewing my PD classes, but no. Megan Lena's a new high school special education teacher. Jessica Levy is gonna be teaching high school science and chemistry. And we've hired Glenn Sullivan, who was, who used to be at Sunderland Elementary School as our new V D, and he's also teaching P E part-time. Our fall play is underway. They're, they're already rehearsing the importance of being earnest. The performances are slated to take place the weekend of November fifteenth. Just in terms of social emotional learning, so we've relaunched our peer mentoring program this year. We've got a tenth grade, a tenth grade boys group, which our assistant principal, Mr. Dredge, is meeting with. We are gonna be having our middle school boys group shortly as well. And we're, we're gonna be, we just purchased a new S C L curriculum for ninth and tenth grades called Changing Prespan度. So we're looking to roll that out within the next few weeks. And I wanted to officially recognize two of our graduated seniors from last year. I received official notice from the college board that they have, that they did receive the AP Capsule Diploma, and that would be Leah Gump and Julia Walkowitz. So just so you understand, so the AP Capsule Diploma, it's granted to students who earn scores of three or higher in both AP Seminar and AP Research and on, and on four additional AP exams of their choosing. So I wanna officially congratulate them. And then I shared with everybody our, our annual guidance report, which shows, gives you a pretty good rundown in terms of the schools that our students were accepted to, the schools that our students are going to. It's, it's, I think it's really interesting to look at it. Also in terms of historical data, you can see over the years. I think the data goes back, goes back many years in terms of, you know, how many students are in the workforce, in college, or the service. And it's just interesting to see how things have, have changed over the years. So that's where we're at right now. Early release is happening. We're doing P D already, which is great. And we've got open house happening next Thursday at six thirty.
You have lots of updates?
What's that?
Lots of updates?
Sure do.
Can't see it here. It's not on here and there.
They changed it. Alright, let's get the social consensus.
So what I did is I did the full district, and so we'll kind of go quickly through the elementary schools, but I think it's good, for some of you who are also elementary graduates, they assume we're gonna get this twice. But it's good to see all these are going on the districts and consistencies and what is supposed to be working on him, just to improve the workload that this individual has been undertaking. So in each slide I have what it is, what we paid, what the funding source was, so you get an idea of, you know, different towns are funding different things. They put a new video surveillance system in at Conley Elementary. They announced running through a town warrant. They also put a new phone system in, running through a town warrant, upgrading all the classroom phones. They even upped it to speed. You know, stopping you, I knew it quickly because it's not really improving, but if you want, if you have a question, feel free to jump in. Conley has finished acing their entire building besides the gymnasium. So they got ahead of the other elementary schools that were running first in, and they finished doing that today. So seventeen thousand, that doesn't include the rebate that's coming back from the school, so that's good news. At Deerfield, we have that new entryway that is ready to show off. We're having a celebration Friday morning. That came from three different funding sources, probably about thirty each, each around a hundred thousand dollars. It'd be a P grant, town warrant, and then school choice might come with that. These, um, they got a good jump on their mini split pumps. About two-thirds of their classrooms are done. They have one more phase to go to get all their classrooms done. They have a couple of their larger rooms that aren't done, their cafeterias that are rather large. And their gymnasium isn't in queue, but they didn't say they used town warrant and school choice on that. They also updated their phone system. They, we were able to do a side entrance with some end-of-year money and some school choice money. This side entrance was a muddy mess and everybody, trip paths are dangerous to exit to. This is what the car loop is on that, you face delivery on the right-hand side. They also have a video surveillance upgrade. They use S R three money to fund that as well. And so this is getting more, greater off-the-road coverage. They had a new system before, but not coverage that we felt was appropriate. They also gave classroom flooring as well. As you know, some of these elementary schools are doing like three classrooms a year. And they have nine classrooms to cover. Frontier, so here's, we'll slow down a little bit so that gets you up to speed what's going on here. We did phase one of the roof replacement project. As you all know, those are the numbers up there of each stage of it. They're gonna be, you know, four hundred sixty-one thousand, it's a ten and sixty. And they were able to complete construction early, early July. So they got that, they got that done really quick. They got in, they got out. According to our clerk of the works, we saw that job, which we added on later on, the eight thousand dollars. I made that approval because there were so many measures done right. Our bill does not know that the whole platform is being appropriately put down. So this, we had, it was all those giving us expertise for years beyond sight every day to make sure they were being signed properly. We'll be, the capital meeting, the Frontier Capital Meeting will be probably sometime in early October. We'll start talking about when we need to cap things. So here's just some things that fall out of the maintenance budget, but they're rather big chunks. We replaced bleachers in the gymnasium. You'll see there's one set that's blue. Sorry, I didn't get the matching color, but they were at the point that they'd been hit by enough softball and baseballs that they were breaking apart. The walking cooler finally got done, as you remember, you did that with FY twenty-three. They were finally getting parts and able to do it during the summer. They couldn't do it last year. They couldn't squeeze it in during vacation, so they got it done this summer. So that was a town warrant in the budget. Sofa painting again, this swing came in under, ended up being under budget. We had a budget around thirteen thousand for it because the equipment that's needed came in under ten thousand. But you can see the before and after picture. It's just, again, it's deferred maintenance, as some townspeople will call it, but we don't have the equipment to do it, so we kinda have to save money aside to do that size of a project for simple painting. Then we had eight thousand dollars for the tree removal, some of the big pines next to the fences. A lot of the pine, uh, trees near the, they were falling onto the track, the track fences, and around the dab bar from that, fear of falling on their cars. I just like to mention this because, again, these are, Deerfield B T W did contribute two thousand toward it because it was indeterminate where the town line was between the track and the school. I think Chris over at Deerfield B T W was generous with that town line, he gave a few bucks. They did some Deerfield maintenance and some of ours, so we took, we got a little bit of impact there for Deerfield. And it's just also just like tree maintenance, eight thousand, it's just trimming, nothing, it's not adding anything. It's just cutting down stuff to prevent damages. The other ones, Sunderland has started their mini split installation under town warrant. In maintenance budget, it's back to nine classrooms. And they did electrical upgrades in order to get that. Of course, they call it Ben Barshewski, he sent me these photos of kids in it, and he put a kid in the closet.
It's my kid.
There you go. You know, all of our buildings are reaching an age where stuff like rock is happening around the sill of this building. It was made of wood. And so they did this over five years, just kind of, you know, it's in order to keep on other capital projects. They, but they did this over five phases. Last year they couldn't get to it, our contract included, so they did four and five this year, but it was funded over five years. They also did a window project using ARCA money. This, this one ended up being kind of a mess because asbestos was thrown on the windows after the project started. I had to go back to the town to ask for all the money the town was willing to work with us in order to get us another, around fifty thousand dollars in order to beat the asbestos that was in the window lazy itself. It wasn't exposed, but the building was, was lost in that. And then Whately, they also got electrical upgrades on town warrant. They got mini pump in half of their building. They're gonna shoot the other half next year using ARCA money. They did some duct cleaning. A big part of their building's with ducts, ductwork, using ARCA money. And they replaced the bathroom flooring from tile to an easier, you know, kind of solid type surface off the town warrant. And then just these kids are darn cute, so they did a office flooring as well. And they did some exterior doors under town warrant that were running as well, so. Oh, and they had a huge problem with their fire suppression system over the summer. We had to go to town, ask for money because the fire system started leaking. That's what we've been busy with, so they were really good, left over money before the deadline. But anyway, so that was going across all the districts, a lot of different projects, a lot of different things that went on that did and such, so a lot of moving parts. But any questions on Frontier? What's that? Yeah, I got a picture of the crane, you know, I guess like before and after pictures maybe. We can do a field trip someday. Can see the white roof.
I think the final numbers showed that the estimates were pretty right on. And that's important. Somebody ought to be congratulated for the skill. Somebody ought to be congratulated for the skill estimating.
Yeah, it was, it was, we just had a little bit of add-ons with the roof project. Wasn't much to be expected. They found a little bit more rotting, not rotting, wet insulation. Because we already did a scan to figure out how much. It was six months later, so some of those areas grew even. So if you last, because it's worth it, if we had growing in wet insulation, we did, we got, we got it done in time. So, you know, as we approach the next phase, the roof, we'll talk about this as we talk about capital. But probably going to have to look at the scans again, see any areas that are the worst and go after that section next. But we have it kind of phased as we see it. I'll explain all that later, but. Keep going.
Yeah.
Alright, so we have the.
I'm trying to keep rolling, I thought you.
So the, each year, the handbook is approved by the school committee. I did send it to everybody, it's over two hundred pages long. And what, you've got a PDF version, I believe. The Word version online, everything's hyperlink, so you can just go to the table contents, click on it, and it takes you to the place you're at. So as you got it, you've been like, wow, this is hard to go through. But it actually, it's more user-friendly than the Word doc we had before. Where you can kind of click and just, and all the links as promised are in it so that you can travel. What I'm trying to do is get all the whole district to be under the majority of one handbook. Because when I started, there were five separate handbooks that had to be updated every year, you know, from each elementary school. And a lot of them are seeing the same thing. So we really should be following the same practice in each elementary school. Your Frontier, so Frontier is a little different, you know, dealing with older age students. But that's why you're seeing the different handbooks. Where they're trying to keep the, each individual elementary school who's, they have different procedures and stuff within their handbooks there. But stuff that's common through all, they're trying, we're trying to sink into one. So it's kind of a, second, it's actually the second major step, because we already did one last few years. We've been working on it with the elementary school. Now we're bringing the two together. We'll see how it works. So if you get any feedback from people, let me know if it's too much, too overwhelming. We can split them two apart, but we decided to keep them together to see how it, see how it worked. So you do need to vote to approve the handbook. And it is already in motion, so if you have questions and concerns, we can try to answer them. And the biggest change student-wise, as George mentioned, is the cellphone policy. George, just want to give an update for those who don't have kids complaining about it at home.
Are your kids complaining about it?
Mine are okay.
Honestly, so, I mean, the update basically is that, you know, so the policy didn't change for middle school. So seventh and eighth grade is still, is still the same. Which means that the students don't have, they don't have their cellphones all day for seventh and eighth grade. They put them in their lockers, they don't have, they're not even on them. So high school, the policy is different. Basically, all the teachers have cellphone racks. Kids come in, they put their cellphones into the rack to charge or to sit. And if they leave the room during the, during the block to use the restroom or to do whatever, they don't take the phone with them. So the phone is there for the entire block. Between classes, they can take their phones. They can have their phones at lunch as well. And so far, not good. We've been, it's been, it's been, I would say, successful. We've had one or two outliers who have decided that they need their phones a little bit, or that said they didn't want to put it in. But overall, it's been, it's been successful. Teachers are saying that the kids are more focused. And so we're, it's, we're just going to keep, we're going to keep doing it. So yeah.
Thanks. Any question, that's fairly the hardest topic within the.
I just want to say I really appreciate what Hannah said when she was giving her report that she's noticed as a student that other students are more engaged now. And I think that speaks a lot because as adults, we can say what we want for the kids or want them to do. But she's noticing that, that's a lot.
George, in terms of like teachers, are they all supportive equally? I mean, you know.
Yes, that, that was one of them. That was one of the concerns, I think initially, when they, when it was brought to us initially. We thought it was maybe a handful of teachers, but I would say ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent of the teachers were like sign off on it. Like they, and so the teachers have been very supportive of it. The teachers have been, they've been enforcing it. And so that's, that's really important. Because we couldn't do it without the teachers.
Yeah, are, are teachers accountable to keeping up with it? Because like, my father gave me an example from his school about going to some classrooms where some of the kids had phones and the teachers aren't doing anything about it.
No, the teachers are enforcing the fact that the good students aren't having phones. We're not, we're not finding that something. I mean, I, I go to the classrooms a lot. Their, the racks are always there, they're always in use.
Nice.
And you think the system is perfect. I think the idea would, the balance between responsibility in the lock, kind of the lockdown mode of phones versus responsibility and balance. So, you know, when you think about cellphones, it buzzes, it's not the buzz that's drawing your attention. It's buzzing, it's taking it out, it's reading the messages, the thinking about the message, the putting the phone back in. You lost a kid for two minutes to five minutes, depending on what the message said. You know, so limiting that alone is going to, is going to help the rate deal. And I don't see kids in the hallway, like once they enter the hallway, phones are out and going crazy either, like they've been deprived. I'm sure they're looking down and checking it, but nobody's texting them because they're wrong class. It's their parents probably who's texting them.
I feel like I get the impression that, you know, I'm in the lunchroom every day. I don't really get the impression that the students are on their phones constantly at lunch now because they don't have it in their class. They're still talking to each other, they're still engaging each other, you know? So that's a really good thing.
Yeah, there's a lot of other stuff in your, that's the highest, that's the biggest impact on day-to-day, I would say, day-to-day things. In your handbook, everything that's where you highlighted. And the version I gave you is where edits were made, significant edits were made, or add, new things added. So as you went through, if you have any questions. And if you have any questions outside of me, you certainly can shoot me an email and such. Since the, there have been, since this addition has been, it's been worked on. So some of the minor errors are starting to get cleaned up. So we got it probably a week before school started, and we had to go in and like there was some, some things from material we gave them that was already edited. So there's going to be some, it's a live document and it says that in the first, in the preamble, so to speak. So we can make adjustments as the year goes on, if there's errors.
How does it get disseminated to students and parents? How does it get disseminated to students and parents? And I'm assuming it's just on the school website, but how, how is it making its way home?
George, how's it getting to students?
So how's it getting to, it's on the website. So basically, we tell the students about the handbook. We do orientation at the beginning of the year. We let them know that that's where they can find it. They have to sign off on the fact that, that they understand that they can go to it and they can access it there. They have to sign off on the fact that, yes, that they know where to find the handbook.
You can print through your next newsletter. No, 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 throw it in your next newsletter too.
Oh, your newsletter.
Yeah, throw that in there too. Because you, we probably should have sent that out, let them know it's in.
I'll make a motion to accept the new handbook revised.
Well, in favor of approving the revised handbook? Go from passes. And you've got policy, our first read?
So all the policies are first read. So if you have questions, either you can ask them tonight or shoot me emails. Or bring them up for the next meeting. The first one, they're kind of two different groupings. The first one is, we had a short discussion regarding it during our policy subcommittee meeting. I founded language and put it together in that. It's regarding homeschool students. Currently says that they can participate in, you know, read through, access to public school activities and other curricular and extracurricular on approval from the superintendent. Meaning that if you're a homeschool student, you participate in the school play, or in athletics, or any other kind of the upper left school. There's a motion, a movement rather, in many public schools to eliminate that. There's, and I, and I agree with that. I think that we hold students at Frontier to a certain standard, both academically and all the things that we're asking people, our students to do as part of being part of extracurriculars, that we can't require people who are no longer, who are not part of our community day in and day out. There's been some kind of talk about students are homeschooled, who, you know, you get back late at night from a game, they get to sleep in because they don't have to go to school and have the attendance requirement in order to go to practice. You know, academic eligibility, with their students at while homeschool, you know, do forms through me to make sure they're providing a standard of academic. There's no checks and balances on a day-to-day basis. It's very, it's a very kind of open thing. You know, they're just not held to the same standard. Also in here, it says they can be awarded a Frontier diploma. Again, I think you have to go to Frontier and take on Frontier academics to receive a Frontier diploma. So that's the major change in that first one. And, and again, think about that. And if you have questions, comments, concerns, you can tell them at the next meeting. I'll go into the other ones and then we can get them all together. The next one are a series of nondiscriminations on the basis of sex. Nondiscrimin, nondiscriminated basis of gender identity. Sexual and sex-based harassment retaliation. Sorry. Nondiscrimination on the basis of sex under Title IX, including sex-based harassment. So these are all policies that have been changed under new Title IX regulations that were released in August. Our administrative team was trained by an attorney, by our specialized attorney in July, June, I forget. During the summer. She came out and trained all of us under the new Title IX to get us up to speed there. This is the recommendation from our attorney to change our policies. If you go through, you can see what's in red and what's in blue. The one difference there is the second one. Nondiscrimination on the basis of gender identity came from our A and E group, our A T R estimate equity group. They worked on that late spring. Because they felt that really, while the policy guaranteed equal, you know, equal rights and nondiscrimination within it, it didn't spell out, it didn't have language that says you're accepted here. And this committee worked hard putting this together. It then ran it by the LGBTQ plus group in our school. So the students got to look at it as kind of an assignment, get their feedback. Their, they gave us feedback, their feedback that applied to the policy, they tried to put into, into this as well. They also gave us some general feedback and some other things as well in regards to. So this is coming from that, so feel free to read through it. As you'll see, it's, it has really supportive language in it. And I think it's very, it's very positive. It's, and it says more than just we, you know, it says we see you more than just saying, you know, we recognize you. Look forward to it, you know what I'm saying? So again, these are all first reads. Anything legal, try to get to me prior to the meeting so I can run it by the attorney, why they made certain changes, certain things. Because if you ask me a legal question on the spot, I may or may not be able to answer that if you're going through it. Make sense? Thank you.
I just want to clarify, many of our policy recommendation changes come from M A S C, but these are all in-house basically?
No. So M A S C sent me a package, and then the Dupre Law Agency, who's your, who you hire, modified their modifications and said, these are the ones we suggest for our districts. If you look at the two side by side, they're pretty close. They're pretty close. But I went with one we paid for legal advice and who we call should we get behind them.
And the only one that stands outside of that is the one that you got feedback from the other?
Correct. And if you read it, you can see it, right, it's A A, which basically means extension of A C A. A C A A means an extension to that one. Where it really kind of spells out, you know, how we, how we, how we recognize students, you know, different gender factors. Different gender factors.
So first read tonight, and then next month we'll do a vote.
That's correct. And you've got a presentation for the.
Should have divided things up, yes.
Yeah, I know, it's alright.
So this is in the, is a hyperlink within my school committee report. I don't know if you saw that. But, so basically, this time of year, I come up and I show you the strategic plan. Sorry, I gotta present it. So again, you can read through this as the cash device now. But basically, so the administrative team met during the summer. And part of what we do during the summer is look at our strategic plan and start to build what we're going to be working on this year, modify. The current strategic plan was built as my entry plan, as I did through the new superintendent production program seven years ago. We then hit COVID and kind of put the capital, we put the, the strategic plan. We worked on some things, a lot of things we put on the back burner and then brought it back the last two years. We're bringing that forward. So what we'd like to do this year is rebuild the strategic plan. While there's certainly areas, when you look at a strategic plan, that are, are static moving forward. That we are, we have directions we're moving with certain curriculum. There are directions we're moving with, you know, as George talked about tonight, with different things about behaviors and social emotional things. We haven't gone out to see input from the community to develop a strategic plan. And so that's what we want to do this year. Is when we build our school improvement plans, we'll build off the static things that we're already working on. And then, at the same time, while we're building a strategic plan. And for some reason, it's not scrolling down.
Because you're in the meet, you have to go to the other tab.
What's that?
You have to scroll from the other tab right now, you're in the meet.
Oh, from the other link you're saying? It's, what's weird, in case you're wondering what's going on, the Google, we end up, our Google platform doesn't allow me to log in anymore. I've been in two places that once, which is how we did everything last year. That's why everything's a little bit off in the next meeting. I didn't know it until I went to wait for an hour. So, two hours to go. So, so basically, our timeline is, in September, we're going to communicate this out to families that we're doing this, and staff. In October, we are going to send out a survey to families and staff. We're looking at different, when I say we, right now, it's Sarah, Laura, myself, putting this together. But basically, looking at other, there's a lot of different models throughout the state that we're stealing ideas from, borrowing. And you ever sent out a survey to family and staff? And then we're going to do a series of copies to, with some, some questions, as follow-up to that, at the different schools. After that, the team will then try to create a portion of student success. Okay? And also sometimes, we give portion of student success for the elementary and portions of a graduate for Frontier. Basically, what do we want our existing students to be able to do? And what do we want them, you know, in looking at other strategic plans, they, you know, they look at a series of highly areas, sometimes five to six areas where, from being, you know, active and engaged citizens to, you know, academic side of things to, you know, you know, social emotional wellbeing, those different kinds of things. And then the writing team between January and February, we'll put a draft together. We'll then put it through a SWOT analysis, which basically is a, is a system to kind of critically look at plans. And really look at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and such. And then we'll bring it back. We'll then agree with the school councils and teachers, look for kind of finishing, touching feedback. And then we'll bring it back to school committee to look at, get feedback. And based on that feedback, either it's ready to go, or we take it back and we tune it up for the following school year. That's kind of the timeline we did. So when you look at strategic plans, I mean, if I was to self-critique this already, even though we're fresh out of the gate, what I'm trying to do is make something that's manageable with our size district. Some strategic plans really do, they bring in outside consultants. They bring in, there's lots of, I would say, lots of fireworks around it in the sense of lots and lots and lots of meetings. And sometimes the process becomes bigger than the plan itself. I'm trying to look for a balance of getting constructive feed. balance of getting constructive feedback that we can apply to a plan and getting a useful plan out within the same year, so, you know, it is, as I look at this plan, it is a dra, it's a draft, and it's a guide to go forward, we can modify, change, take different ideas, or if people have ideas about, you know, what we can add to it, that kind of thing, I think the general survey will give us some direction as well, where we may have to try to get more feedback from, so, anyways, that is where I'd like to go with our strategic planning this year. Yeah?
Who's on the leadership team?
What's that?
Who is on the leadership team?
Laura, Sarah, myself, the two curriculum directors, myself. And we can, we will, so, we also, like, we talk about our strategic plan at our full administrative meeting, which includes your director of special education, all your principals and such, so, this will be brought through them as well, but when I talk about the leadership team, who's really directing this, it's the three of us.
Will the five listening sessions be open to members of all five school communities, or is it meant to be each building is only for that school's community? Are you sharing all five to all?
Excellent question, I think we assumed we were trying to visit each community so they could come, but it's the same feedback, so, I'll jot that down, I think I would have no problem with anybody going in again, that they can make.
Is there any questions to tail off of that, any hours that are outside of what's typical working hours that might increase access for families that-
No, that's a good idea too, to do an evening session, maybe an evening session for anybody from all five groups.
Making it online also increases accessibility.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I said. And I can give you guys updates as the year goes on too, if we're, I think, if it's sitting here now, that probably makes sense too.
Any other questions about the strategic plan? All right, almost, almost done, moving on to committee and chair reports, I don't know if anybody was meeting over the summer, I don't think there's any updated committee reports, we did have a professional development last week at the Sunderland Library, which was very well attended, and really kind of a lovely mix of all the school committees and nice exchange of ideas, and really thankful for Jessica and Carrie Hetchels for putting, putting that on, so, thank you very much for, for doing that, hopefully we can make that a regular routine, because I think that was really helpful. Did you, I should ask Jessica, did you send out all the information in that resource?
Carrie did, yes.
Okay, did she send it out to everybody, whether you were at the meeting or not at the meeting?
I believe she did, yes.
Perfect, all right, so you guys should have, I mean, if you weren't able to make it, you should have some access to a really wonderful compilation of resources that should help us all to be better in our roles as school committees, so, thank you again for sending those out, and, we don't have a report from the collaborative, and you don't have anything else?
The only thing else that was on my superintendent's report there was, just, I want to make sure, you all folks know the ballot question number two, I just want to make sure that, because you're gonna be in conversations with people and being educational leaders, it's talking about removing, it's not talking about removing MCAS, which is a big misnomer in the community, it's talking about removing the graduation requirement of passing MCAS, okay, so MCAS is not going away, there's no plan in it, plan in the state for it to go away, because we, MCAS is required by the federal government, we have to have an assessment in order to receive federal funding, and that is MCAS, if you're going to remove MCAS, you'd have to replace it with something else, and that would be a very expensive multi-year endeavor, so, there'd be a lot more kind of things happening with that, so I just wanted you to know that as school commissioners, when people say, yeah, I don't like MCAS, we shouldn't be testing kids, we're still gonna be testing the kids, the question is whether or not it's a graduation requirement, okay, and, you know, statistically, it doesn't really affect Frontier, the seventeen years I've been here, we've had one student who was not able to pass the MCAS, and there was other extenuating circumstances connected with that as well, so, so it doesn't really affect our district overall, but I'm not gonna get any more, you know, the political of it, stay my line there, but this usually has some nasty stuff, I just want to make sure you guys know that as you're having elevator conversations, which are really short in Western Mass.
Because the long signs and the marketing behind the ballot question implies that we're doing away with it.
I believe that MASC's delegate assembly passed a resolution that basically points toward a yes vote on question two.
Points what?
MASC's delegate assembly passed a resolution that supports question two, before it's question two.
Supports the ending of testing two.
Uh, yes.
And MAS is against, Masters Association of Secondiors of School Superintendents is against, so, they believe that there, there should be an assessment in standard to graduate. Go up to the voters.
All right, unless anyone has any pressing information that they want to get off their chest, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, anybody want to stick around? All in favor?
You can.
I got you.
You hold on there, screen.
Thank you.